This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mayor Ann Delises and I'm calling this work session of the City of Port Orford City Council to order at about 5:34.
And we are going to begin with a roll call. Counselor Brennan?
Here.
Counselor Burns?
Present.
Counselor Rask?
Here.
Counselor Pogwiz is absent. Counselor Webb is on his way. And so we will add, well, hopefully he'll get here soon. And we have a vacant seat right now. Okay, so that's that. So now we're, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the full liberty and justice of all.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you guys so much for coming to this special session. We are going to be, this is the priority setting session for this council. And as you know, I'm just going to say it, because I, do we have people online who are participating?
We have a handful of people online.
Okay. So I'll just mention, for the priority setting process, we have asked council members to submit their priorities. And then we did that last week. And thanks, everybody who submitted priorities, everyone did. And then the staff, and I was involved in this, we have put them together to share. So what you guys have here with you today, you've got the list of what everybody else put in, so you can see what everybody's priorities are. And then we put together, maybe I'll turn it over to Melissa to describe what we did. We put together a, kind of started putting together council priorities together with staff priorities. And what we're going to be doing tonight is looking at those to make sure that what you've said is reflected in those and to maybe talk about the highest priorities and how to do that. So Melissa, can I turn it over to you to just explain to us why, how important, why priority setting is important and why we're doing this?
Sure. So, one of the things that helps and that the council does is they, you folks, set the vision, right? So the big, the big vision ideas is what you folks are in charge of. And so that has to do with, you know, long-term goals, long-term planning, setting ordinances, setting policies of how you want things to go. And then, as the city administrator, my job is to make sure that the staff, after we know those things, that we can help support those visions and that we can have a targeted way to do the work, because there's so much work to be done, as we all know. And we would love to have a staff that's large enough to be able to get all of that done in a very, very timely manner. But unfortunately, we do have money constraints. And so we kind of have to have a roadmap or a prioritized list of where we're going. So I know it will help me, that, you know, I always think, if I'm trying to get somewhere, if I'm trying to get to Kokeel, then if I just go start walking off in a direction with no plan and no thought about where I'm going to go, the likelihood of me finding myself in Kokeel is very low. And so having at least kind of a, a general direction and a thing that, a goal-setting area to get yourself there is really important. Understanding that there will be things that come up that we don't foresee, that we can't, you know, plan for necessarily, but mostly a way that we can be transparent to the community members and transparent to the council of what we're doing and why, which again, is led by your vision and policy setting. So that's the reason to do this. And then, most importantly is, then once we have these lists that say, what are the most important things, then we can actually build our budget to prioritize those things and to be able to hopefully carry them out. So that's, that's the overall vision of this.
And if I may just say another thing that I've observed at various times, I mean, you want to, you might call it brush fires or the shiny, you know, shiny thing syndrome. Is sometimes you're working on something and somebody comes in with a new idea and says, oh, do this, you know, or there's a crisis and we have to do that. Or, and it's very easy to lose track of the big picture and just be in the brush fire all the time. And by putting it on to a priority, kind of coming up with our priorities, it helps, it will help Melissa, as our administrator, be reminded, okay, yeah, got those brush fires, but I really need to also be working on our water system or our, making sure our public safety is, you know, sufficiently funded, or whatever the priority is. So, anyway.
Yeah. And I think too, just a quick add is to, we need to walk and chew gum at the same time. We need to handle the short-term things that we look at and the things that we can, low-hanging fruit and our good bang for our buck to try and help, help do, but also be setting the framework into the future so that we can actually have both of those ideas in our minds. And that will help on this too. There's short-term things and there's longer-term things that we can try to, try to focus on. So I appreciate the work that went into this.
So, anyway, so what we did is you can see on these lists of what different ones of us had to say. And there is some good overlap on, on most of them. And I think all of us would say, you know, most of them are ones that we would all share and hold to be of value. And what, do you want to talk about the buckets? Or do you want me to, to talk about like that part of things and how we did this?
No, I could just talk about this piece.
Yeah.
So, so one of the things we did, and Joseph, if you can get this document up, if you can, is a draft, because again, we took what councilors said and tried to combine them or, or see which things went together and how they, they could be part of a heading. So.
Organize them.
Yeah, how to organize them. And so, this is a draft. And the three main categories that really rose to the surface was, you know, fiscally responsible operations. So that would include, obviously, the administration of the city, planning and making sure that we have a well-trained, you know, well-functioning staff. The next bucket, so fiscally responsible operations, the next heading would be utilities and infrastructure. We all know we have work to do there. So that would be obviously the focus on drinking water, wastewater, and then the facilities of the city and streets. And finally, the last sort of overarching piece would be livability and health. And that would include public safety, clear communication, again, for transparency, and our parks.
So, and from that, when those came up, and this was kind of just, you know, going from the lists that all the councilors submitted, and then coming up with these buckets, staff, and I participated in this too, came up with three sheets. So one sheet, basically, for each of these categories. One is fiscally responsible operations, livability and health, and utilities and infrastructure. Oops, I guess we'll, um, anyway, and we put, we tried to put everybody's, basically, everybody's priorities, we put into this. And what we did too, I mean, initially, I was thinking that council would do its priorities and we'd get staff do its priorities and then put them together. And what has happened is Melissa has really already started working with staff on their priorities. And we've done a little bit of that through the finance committee. So we ended up starting to put together the staff priorities in here already. So this is now like a draft of council priorities and staff priorities, this draft that you're seeing. And yeah, so Joseph's put up the fiscally responsible operations. And I think what we want to do tonight is go through this and just get your, your impressions of how does this look to you? Does this look like a good, um, general framework? And I think, Joseph, correct me if I'm wrong, recorder Harrison, I'm sorry, the top, are these in order, each column, like the top priority? Or is, does it really matter? Are they just all things we want to do?
I believe they've been ordered in the manner that you two requested during our sort of drafting session. Fiscal responsibility is the first one, administration, followed by ending curtailment, then emergency management, and then the tech upgrade, same thing. I believe all of them have been maneuvered. So they're in the order you requested, which seems to be the, you know, the more councilors request it, the higher up it appears.
Right. Okay. So we kind of took a stab at that, of drafting that. And so tonight, what we'll do is just go through maybe each category and get your guys' impressions and see if that, if, you know, discuss it and see if our draft is going in the right direction, if we need to make adjustments, that kind of thing. Counselor Webb has shown up. Welcome.
At approximately 5:45.
Catching a breath? Okay. Yep. Okay. So Melissa, since the first one is city administration, maybe you could walk us through your thoughts on this and then we can, um, say that.
Obviously, trying to do the most we can do with the resources we have available is, is our top priority. You know, we, like a household budget, we have to stay within our, within our means. And that means sometimes we have to cut our spending, or sometimes we have to go out and try to find some more revenue for, for ourselves. And that's what the finance committee has really been working on. This is our second year of having that. And it has been good to talk with our department heads and some council members and our finance folks to, to really talk about, as we've heard many of the councilors have said, well, we could try this, or we could try this. There's a whole laundry list of things that citizens have brought up, our councilors have brought up.
Staff has brought up.
Staff has brought up ways of, again, either improving our revenue forecast or finding cost-saving measures. Or then, one of the things on here is, is continuing with our grants in a strategic way. So the fiscal responsibility, the finance committee is still going through that list. We had a meeting earlier today, this afternoon. And we've gone through to decide, are the things and the ideas, we just took every idea that anyone has given, and then we've thought, is that a short-term thing that we could do that could help us? Is it something that we just need more research on? Or is it something that after we talk through it and do some research, think that's just really not going to help us out right now? Like that might be.
Bang for the buck may not be worth it.
Yeah, is not, is not really there. So some of those ideas that we're on here, you know, selling right-of-ways, updating our fee schedules, restructuring our staffing, I guess, with restructuring. Someone brought up, you know, maybe a vacant home tax or other taxes that might be available to that. So those are lists that we have gone through and again, kind of figured out which ones were viable and which ones weren't. We will continue, you know, in the middle of managing lots of these grants that had been put out from before. And there's a lot to that. And so we will continue to do that in a strategic manner. And then also trying to find places where we can thoughtfully prune what we're doing so that we aren't really making difficult situations for our citizens or our, our staff. So that is one of my main top priorities, is to get our fiscal house in order. One of the things that, you know, has, has been a real guiding piece is that we want to end curtailment. We want to have enough water in our pipes to, at all phases of that, to where we don't have curtailment anymore. We want to be able to provide good, healthy water for our people and get us out from underneath that. So we've been really planning around that. And then also, emergency management, working with the Emergency Management Commission. Our real big push has been promoting individual citizen preparedness. That's something that, that individuals can do. And so we're tiny, you know, so going out to have big plans and to help and have all that is just not really feasible for us. But trying to help our individual citizens create their own plans to, to help themselves and to get what they need is, is huge. So also, if there is an incident or there is something, to be able to create incident command at our level in case we are blocked off and we don't have any help coming, that has been a big piece of it. And then also with communication, and we've made some headway on, on that. So those are things that our offices continue to work with. Also, we've talked about long-term technology. Those computers, unfortunately, are just not going away. It's something we're going to be working with for a long time when we rely on, on them, as well as even technologies of our copiers and our phones and everything else to make sure that our city, we can be responsive and things work, work well. So working on a technology rotation plan and also still working on this .gov situation and the email, city email fixes. I have been in contact even the last two days with our technology person out of North Bend. And she is still, we're right at the end of having Microsoft talk to our people to be able to get this .gov situation. So it has been just nearly a year that I've been working on this, but we're, we're getting closer. So that's great.
So, and just to kind of say, so you might see some of your ideas put in here, like the interest in figuring out like the incident command and the interest in what do we do with emergencies? That's something several couple of councilors put forward and, and plan to end curtailment, is one I put forward. And I know some of the ideas for revenue generation, as Melissa said, we're, they're in our list here, but we're, we're, we're kind of working on that through the finance committee. But, so that's kind of how that's looking. Rather than going through each one, maybe we should just give, do you want to just take time to look at them? And, or do you guys have any comments or suggestions about the first category or the first page, fiscally responsible operations?
I think if you just real quick went through all of them, that gives.
Would that be helpful?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay. So with planning, one of the things that we are doing and, and staff is diligently looking up right now is to make sure that our fees across the city, if they are in alignment with other municipalities and other, if we're in, if we're in alignment. I mean, you know, we, we charge $5 for a seven-day burn permit. Well, what does Gold Beach charge? What does Myrtle Point charge? We're doing things like that, just to see that we're kind of in the same, same ballpark or in a, in a reasonable ballpark. Also with planning, you know, to turn in and have a building permit filed or to, you know, meet with, with planning staff to be able to do that. Other places charge people for that, to, to come and have those meetings to discuss what's happening and to have the application fee and to do that. So we're just really trying to make sure that we are not, we need to sustain ourselves. We have to break even. And so if our office isn't breaking even on what we're doing, then we're not helping out the team very well. So we're trying to look.
Who makes the final decision on that? Is that a council thing or?
But we'll, I'll bring forward some ideas, yeah.
And I think that's like, you know, we're, that's something where the finance committee asked to go look at these fees and bring them back. And so I think we could look at that and then we'd bring it back to council and say, hey, we're like so much lower than everybody else, this makes sense. Or we're not covering our costs. This is why the finance committee recommends this to council, I think, right? Because fees have to be maybe council.
It's, a staff can't make that kind of decision to up a fee or?
No, those, those things, we're not going to make that unilaterally.
You have to write in the inflation as well. And then think about staff.
Right. And that's one of the things, right.
That's like every single year is going to go.
Correct. And that's one of the things we're talking about in, in the fiscal, in that, in that committee, is that, you know, we do need to make sure we're keeping up on the CPI and keeping up with things because.
People don't notice the $8 increase, but they notice the $88 for increase.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, anyway.
Commissioner Webb, just so you know, you have a version of this right there in paper.
Yeah. Um, we know that there are, there are other planning and building paperwork that have, that citizens have brought forward, you know, a grading permit, as we've talked about, you know, on properties that are going to be built upon. You know, we have to be careful about the wetlands and we have other things around that we just need to make sure that that's done properly. If, for sewer line or water line situation, if there's a cut that has to be put into the street, that, you know, the licensed contractor does that, and then it's back up to what the city would say so that we keep our streets safe. So there's a street cut permit was an example of that. Utility installation, if we're doing, you know, if the Public Works fellows need to go out and install meters or do other things like that. All of those things through planning and getting all that done are places that cost and take staff time and all that. So another one is the housing code update covered by the DLCD grant. So Crystal and her, Planner Crystal Shoji, and the Planning Commission has been really working on these to make sure that we've, we're updating our housing codes. They're on that, on that process. Another piece, again, for transparency with, with our constituents, is to update and verify online versions of the city code. We do that about once a year. And so they do get behind, we know that. They aren't always up. But once we get the, the codes updated, then we'll make sure that they are put up properly and to do that. And also, another big thing for planning has been the new FEMA floodplain maps. And we'll need to make sure we're implementing that properly as it's, as it's given to us at this point. Understaffing, and that is what, what I do, is to maintain a well-trained and competent staff. Continue employee evaluations. Those are things that help us in the long run and help give staff good feedback. And then they can talk to me and give me good feedback of where we're at and how we're doing and making sure that we are in good communication in that way. And that, that helps us stay out of union problems when we're getting along and when we're listening and figuring these things out ahead of time and having good, open, clear conversations that, that will oftentimes stave off those negative outcomes. One of the things that we don't do here is, our insurance company would like us to be able to have yearly trainings. So if you've worked in places, you might have to have CPR training every few years to, to continue there. Every year, you have to listen to bloodborne pathogens. We need to talk about what does harassment look like in the workplace? We have to talk about how we get along. There's certain things that as organizations, and particularly governmental organization, we're supposed to be trained on. And that hasn't happened. I have now been, our, with our insurance company is CIS, and I've been working with them to go into their training modules and to be able to have people go do those things as protection for them. So they know if anything has changed law-wise and also as protection for the city, that yes, they have been trained to do these things. So that's one of the goals. The employee handbook is on its last revision. I've kind of updated it as we go. And so that, we've basically been using the one from long ago that has been updated somewhat, but I want to get that officially blessed by council. And then, even though we were behind with union negotiations before, we will start the process this year of preparing for union negotiations for next year. So again, those are, those are just some of the big-ticket things that I will be working on and staff.
So, before we go on to another page, I mean, I just want to say, it strikes me that this is also, I know a lot of this stuff is stuff you are working on already. And it's really kind of great to see, oh, yeah, this is what, this is what our city, what you are doing and what staff is working on. And so.
Yeah. And I think that was one of the things that helped me coming into this role was that one of the things was, no, we need the ABCs, you know, the ABCs of what we're doing kind of squared back up. And so that has helped me to know, okay, these are the things that I want to, want to do. And staff has been very receptive and we've worked well together to make these things happen. So it's just continuing on. We can always improve.
And I just want to say, like, in a specific thing, for example, in this, in this overview, we didn't always go down to the very specifics. Like, for example, and you weren't here at the beginning, Counselor Webb, but like, for example, Counselor Webb talked about, you know, the funds for the FOIA process and stuff and making sure that it's adequate to cover costs. So that's kind of under update fees, but it's also under, we have a thing on the next, one of the next pages is about transparent communication. So I think we can go back and add in a few of these details, like, once we figure out the big picture and to make sure they're in there. But the idea was to kind of create a little bit more of a higher-level document. And then put, have, have it be filled in with the little stuff or these small things where we can make, you know, that are important, if that makes sense.
And just one question, as, as staff, is the document itself understandable? Is, does this, does this make sense to you, the way it's laid out? Because again, that's, that, like these.
Oh.
Those are yours.
No, I didn't even listen to this part yet.
Yeah. So just as far as if the, if the headings are things that make sense, that feel to gather everything and that, breaking it down this way, if it's, is a user-friendly thing, again, it's about being transparent and to say, what, what are we doing and how are we doing it? And so we tried to make it as clear as possible. But if there's thoughts on that as well, definitely take.
I think they're great. I think they're wonderful. They're very user-friendly.
Okay. Thank you. Joseph has been the one that's been putting all the things in there. So I appreciate our recorders diligence on all this. So.
Tremendous Excel skills. And, and just another thing, I know that you did, and I did a little bit, but you gave them to me, looked at a few, how do other cities do this? Like, what is the format? Do they put their things in? You know, the last time we did this, we just kind of made a little list because we were just winging it. But with our administrator who is looking at, well, how do other cities do this and goes to trainings and understands that these are the kind of formats that are helpful. So I appreciate that you have brought that to us.
Absolutely.
Okay. So any other, and we can talk about it at the end too, as you were saying, we could go on to the next, you want to do the next?
Want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay. So obviously, utilities and infrastructure is a massive part of what we do. Public Works actually oversees about three-quarters of the services that we provide as a city. And so this is really where a large portion of our personnel works. And then also, these are the things that when people think of the city and what we're doing, this is what comes to mind. So drinking water, obviously, is a major component of that. We have our dredging of the reservoir. We have our permits. We're now working with Business Oregon and finishing that at the very, very last piece of this to get funding for that. We have plans as far as how to find our secondary water source while we're doing the dredging, because we're still going to need to provide water to the citizenry. So that's a, that's a big project on the drinking water side. Also, as always, water plant repairs and upgrades. We've talked about, that actually should be under wastewater, the humus ponds.
Oh, whoops. Yep.
One of the things that, that happens, an emergency generator, if, when, if, when the power goes off, we have to still, you know, we want to provide water. And so our emergency generator up on Coast Guard Hill is nearing the end of its life. And so that's one of the things that we've looked at, that we need to really be cognizant of. And also the clarifier. So John is adorable, talk about the tubes and the filters and things. And one of, he's also talked about is to have, to change out the filter media that is inside our filters and perhaps a different way to clean out the filters when we do back washes that maybe will be more efficient as far as not using as much water, but maybe using a different way to do that. So he is doing a lot of research on what are the things that we can do and within our, within our budget. And also, the raw water tank is a grant that we are working through. And the raw water tank will be next to the water treatment plant, right next to that. So that also is in process and we're working with CCD and other groups to make that happen. And then, again, we've put, continuing to work on infrastructure grants, because we just don't have the money to just come up and fix all this stuff all at once right now. We just don't. And so we have to be thoughtful and strategic about which grants we go after, which then also brings up having to be thoughtful and strategic about our engineering, our legal fees, are all of those things to, to make all these things happen. So it's a multi-headed dragon that we're trying to wrangle with these. So that's the drinking water side. Wastewater side, lots of plant repairs and upgrades. We would like to do system improvements of the UV light treatment that goes through to help clean our water, part of our process, to sanitize it. And then also, we do not have an emergency return to plant right now line. So if the, if the wastewater goes through and the effluent comes out, if something hasn't been properly taken care of, then we, we, right now, it would go into humus ponds. And so we need to have a way to get that returned to be reprocessed in case something goes wonky. So right now, it would just go to there. So it wouldn't go all the way to the outfall, but it, we, we need to find a way to get it. but it, we, we need to find a way to get it from those, like, sludge ponds, humus ponds, back to the, back to the plant. So that's an important, an important piece. Also, the Arizona and Wyoming lift stations are two places that John Isador has said are really, again, nearing the end of their live, lives. The Arizona Lift Station is actually in production, so it's, we've, it's been ordered, it's done, and we're waiting for the, to actually be built. And then, once it comes here, then they will fit it because it's not exactly the same as the old ones, so there's going to have to be some extra engineering and other permits and things that have to go with this, which we have. So that's way in progress, which is great. And then the other one is the Wyoming Lift Station. That one has been on the last few wastewater master plan, saying it needs to be updated, and it still has not fixed itself. And so it needs to still be worked upon. So we know that that's an important one. The next thing is the water recycling project. So that is a, that was the legislative pass-through, and so we have turned in the paperwork for that one, and we are getting the last pieces of that to hopefully have that money released to us soon, and that, too, is through Business Oregon. And that is, again, the $750,000 in lottery money to do a feasibility study to see if we, if our plant can be brought up to snuff to be able to recycle the water. So that's, that's a good thing. And then, finally, one of the things we need to have done in the next year is to inspect our primary outfall, which is.
Did you do that recently?
We, we need to do it. It's something that was on there. We have to get it done this year.
Not Tom Calvinese.
No, it never worked out. That was the hopeful plan that he could help, but then it turned out you needed to have somebody with a commercial permit to do it, and then by the time, it, it just never got done, and then the weather turned. But we have to get it done, not this year, by June, isn't it, by June?
Yeah, it has to be done, yeah, it has to be done this summer. So that will, that, that's why it's on here because it is a, it is a, something that has to be.
Budgeted to that.
Yeah.
We're going to be.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
It'll be the next.
No, it has to be this year's budget, so that's important to keep in mind.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to be by this, end of this fiscal year, so when we go and do whatever supplemental budget, we have, I don't know if it was on the budget, because I think we were hoping to just get help to get it done.
Right, but it's, it's more involved than what we thought it would be, and people who we thought were going to be able to help us out were then not able to, and they didn't have the skill level at which it, it really needed. So now, we've been given grace, and now we need to get this done. And then, facilities and streets are city building, the roofs and repairs and things. We keep getting bids, people come out and do those things, and then it's like the decision isn't made, and then we just had one this last summer that we were hopeful and had the personnel lined up and then realized that based on some of the contractors, licenser, and other things, that that just really wasn't going to work. So we were hopeful, but that fell through. Again, just overall, improved facility maintenance as far as just taking good care and being good stewards of what we have is important and maintaining that as best we can. And then, road repairs. We understand that there are places that are not up to par, and we are seeking grants and things to turn in, which we did that before. We had turned in a, a road grant, but then we didn't get it, and now we're resubmitting that so that we can hopefully repair the roads and take care of that. And where a lot of, in the streets, where a lot of things right now go is for actual personnel time is where that goes, and so we don't see a lot of actual asphalt getting put on the streets. It's a lot of it is the paying for the people to come and make sure that things are cleared out or whatever, so.
So if we had a gas tax this summer, we could be using that money right away.
That is, that is an example of something that could be done, but yes, if there's, if there's taxes or things that we could do that would be specific for roads, that would be, or it was go to our street fund, that would be something that could happen on that, too. And I, to be honest, I've also talked to the ODOT people, and I'm like, hey, if you have extra stuff and you need to come dump it over here, I'll tell you where to go and you can put it in there, you know? I'm working on all my angles to try to get this done.
Thank you so much, Melissa.
On that part. And then, finally, livability and health is the last major category that we looked at. Public safety, obviously, to continue to provide reliable law enforcement, that was on, on the list, and that is our goal to be able to do. We had also on there, a couple councillors talked about, you know, fire mitigation with a lot of things, so looking at our, maintaining our rights of way and trying to make sure that we are doing that, and we're actually working with the South Coast Watershed.
No, it's the, it's the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yes, Soil and Water Conservation.
We have a memorandum of understanding with them, and they have gotten grants to help people go around in cities and help clear the right-of-ways and help with defensible space. So they have actually been working on that, and Erin Minster, who's our person doing that, is supposed to come to the next city council meeting and give us an update on her progress. I don't really know exactly where she's been working. You may know better than I do, but hopefully she'll be able to tell us. But pretty much, she came and, you know, has grant money to help us do this and looked for kind of the places that we're in greatest need and started there, so we'll see.
It'd be great to have an overview from somebody that was trained to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, and she's on, she's on the ground doing that. I've seen her. We have nuisance properties around, and this also goes with the Enforced Municipal Code, so that is something that was on council priorities, is to really try and find a way so it's not only, it's not only complaint-driven, but trying to find thoughtful ways to make this happen in a more timely manner, because it does take a while to do that. And so we are working, even within the Finance Committee, to think about how, how we can go about doing these in a, in a more clear way. Transparent communication, regular website and Facebook updates. We can always do better, obviously, and so that is kind of a recommitment to make sure that people have what they, what they need. We also maintain the community message boards, so oftentimes, if there's going to be a, an agenda that goes out, Joseph will go around after it's done, the week ahead of time, to put it at the, usually the laundromat, at the board at Ray's, and at the post office, so that people, you know, who maybe aren't online, that are the place, those are the places to look, as well as on our own doors. We post that here at City Hall, so that's a, a way you can see that. Emergency messaging systems, we've talked about that as far as when things happen. We've talked with, about Everbridge. We now are working on our, between our Public Works and police officers and, and our, our crews to be able to have information within an emergency that we can communicate well, including our police officers are already on a, on a plan called FirstNet, which means if there was a problem, if there was something that happened, then those calls would be prioritized on kind of the cell networks so that they could definitely communicate quickly. And now, we're adding Public Works and even my work phone to get phones through that. So in case of emergency, our likelihood of being able to, to communicate clearly with one another and with emergency agencies is improving, so that's really great. And also, we've talked about, Mayor Ann has talked about doing town halls, so more informational giving and kind of sharing with, with the public. So if there are things that come up that, that people want to know more about or want to have some input on, we would be able to do that. I don't, we don't have a schedule or anything like that, but those are ideas.
It's just in the category of how do we improve communication? And I know, yes, other councillors have brought that up in the past, and we haven't been able to get our act together to do it yet, but we're going to put it on here again because it would be a good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, finally, with parks, the community building renovations that are going on, that is very much in progress. We now have HGE Construction, or HGE Architectural Group out of Coos Bay area. Joe Slack and his crew have been working on that, as well as CCD, big federal grants that are going through those. We're waiting to hear if that, you know, how, how that is going to shake out.
We're going to go out to bid.
Right.
Right next week for, is it next week? Or the bid's getting advertised this week?
Right, the bids are already being advertised, and then contractors can come look at plans and things for that. And so that's, if we can get the community building renovations and the American Legion Hall renovations, those are the big things that, again, are priority, priorities for that. The Buffington Park Playground, I know, I've talked to members of the Park Commission, and they're very interested in making sure that we get a playground. And so, once we can see what we have financially, that maybe there's grants they could go after, I've passed a couple grants forward already to say, maybe we can use this money that we have for a match and get more for the kids, or just see, have them come up with the recommendation to the council to say, this is what we would like to do, and then pitch it to you folks, and then you decide how to make that possibly happen. And then also, the transient lodging tax funds, so that is TLT funds. We get those when someone comes and stays in our town, if they stay in a short-term rental, or they stay in a hotel, or they stay somewhere like that. The proprietor then takes a small chunk of a fee, a tax, from them, and then that gets turned into the city to make sure we can provide all the funds, or provide all the services for them. And there are questions about the transient lodging tax and the percentages and things like that. You maybe are hearing about that in legislative updates right now as they're in session, but we're continuing doing things to help with beautification for businesses that are doing that. You know, there's different places that are, that are using that, including Main Street and a lot of things that they're doing, and particularly advertising to make sure that people come to our town to enjoy all of the wonderful things Port Hartford has to offer.
That was a good one.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, as we're going back through this, thank you so much, Melissa. This is a, is an amazing overview of all the things that we might aspire to do in the next year or two.
It is literally the plan. It's the beginnings of the plan.
It's the beginnings of the plan. This is our draft.
Yep.
I do notice, you know, there are some, like, of, like, the more, you know, I don't want to call them smaller things, but more detailed, granular things, maybe is the way, you know, that are on some councillor lists that maybe didn't make it into the final because we were putting things in, but then we kind of simplified it in the end. And I just wonder, just also in general, how do you see having the granular stuff in here? Because I mean, like, you know, we know, let's just say, the plan to end curtailment, like, that's going to require us to think about, well, how much water do we use? And how much water are we going to have more access to once we dredge the reservoir?
You know, I think we should get, actually get a curtailment plan that's legal, too, and have it on standby, you know, the, because what we did before was not, and that was clearly hugely.
We're working on that.
We should have it, you know, on the shelf, that way when, because we may decide that all of our work isn't paying off and we got.
Yeah, well, and the.
Charged fees again, and, and nobody wants to do that, but if we could have that comprehensive, there's just, people may want to preview it.
Well, yeah.
So you're saying for, like, fees in case people are not doing the.
Yeah, yeah, because the, the way that it was based, the prior fee structure was not a penalty structure I'm talking about.
And there's another thing that I noticed that was on Councillor Brennan's thing that didn't make it on wastewater conservation, and those two are really tied, because the curtailment plan, I mean, it may be that, you know, we're going to have to go into curtailment in August and September again. We may have to go into curtailment every year in September, you know? And it's kind of like, we have to have a better plan, just what you're saying. Like, if the tank is low, if we don't have water coming in, we have to ask everybody to help out, you know? And so what does that look like?
And there's, there's federal guidelines for that, and we did not use them last time. So just want to be sure that we get that one right, because we probably would be more likely to put that into play sooner if we knew that it was legit.
Solid plan to do, yeah.
So let's put, I think that, why don't we put that with, just under the plan to end curtailment, just also add curtailment and water conservation? But I wanted to ask you that, though, Melissa, I mean, how do you, you know, because this now, it is like this overarching plan, and there's going to be a lot of pieces in it, but how do you repopulate some of the smaller things? Or do you feel like that's just not, because then, then it's like you don't really have to say this. We don't want to have it be so tiny and granular that it's a pain, but we need to make sure we get the things done that.
Right.
We want to.
And I think part of this is the idea between the big-picture vision and what you folks have some ideas of what you would like to see done, and then a lot of this comes to our staff and me saying, okay, now this is operations, and we're going to make these, the best decisions we can.
Break it down.
To do that, to, to break it down. So I don't particularly want to have every single step of every single thing, because if something comes up that I can't, again, it's, it's only as good as the people who are thinking behind it and in front of it. And so I don't want to put every single little detail that, okay, at 10:30 in the morning, I'm going to make sure that I, no, like, that, that, that's me, that's, you know?
Well, and, and push comes to shove, as we, as we know, yeah, sometimes other stuff is going to come up and you're going to have to.
Right.
But, but coming back to this will make you realize, oh, gosh, we said we were going to work on that.
Exactly.
I want to make sure we get back to that. So I think making sure we add curtailment and, like, water conservation, like, or connect, I think that is really connected, because curtailment, I think, is tied to that, you know?
Well, it's different, we had different levels of, of curtailment, and the, the, where it got goofy, where it got, you know, like, the curtailment itself wasn't so bad. The idea that we needed to cut back and, and save, that was great, right? But when, I think you know, I can't really put it into words, I guess, it was so crazy that it has to be, well, I have an email, did I share that email with you?
Are you looking at me?
I'm looking at both of you, I guess. I'm a little tired.
Yeah, you can see him.
One, one of our, our people here sent an extensive email to me, and it outlined how our methodology of curtailment and, and creating fees and acceptable uses is every single thing was wrong, every single.
Yeah, well, send, send that to us. It's in progress.
You have that, you have that.
I don't have it, but, but I know Melissa is working on and addressing some of them.
Well, part of this is to look at, part of this is to write prior wrongs, okay? Because that, that, they're, right? So that's, that's one.
I actually have people asking me about refunds.
Okay, excellent, because we're in that process, we are in that process right now. Because as we went through, because me coming in late, I don't know everything that happened, but looking through our books and looking through those things, it was like, what is all this? So we are going to be working on, that is in process right now, one. So that, you're, you're letting the cat out of the bag here, we're going to put that out in a educated, thoughtful, you know, way, but that's perfect to just rip that Band-Aid right off.
We're, we're satisfied with, that we were working on it and getting it right.
Yes, and so that, we are doing that now, and that should, that should be coming out shortly. And then, I think what this piece, though, create a plan to end curtailment, was basically, when we are at a point, how do we know when we're out of curtailment? How do we know when we're doing that? Kind of set up some ways to say, like, have some thought about what is it really doing, some goals and what happened? That's what I, in this verbiage, was thinking, too, was how do we have a thoughtful way to come out of curtailment?
Such an easy decision.
Yeah, and also, like.
Based on.
Already made, yeah, it's already made, yeah.
And so, like, you know, we come out of curtailment, and somebody comes the next day and says, okay, we want to hook up 12 houses, or we want to hook up 50 houses, and, you know, we don't really know, well, what can we handle? After we get the reservoir dredged, maybe we can handle 12. Maybe we can't handle 50, you know? We need to, like, think through the numbers and, and have a clear sense of what we can do. And, and then, when we fix our leaks, you know, then we'll have another bunch of water, hopefully, that will be available, so.
That's the wild card, really.
Yeah, so it's as we do these fixes, hopefully, you know, we'll get there.
Thirty percent to 52%, you know, and then back down to 29 or whatever.
Right, right.
You never know.
Correct. So we are working on, on multiple fronts of trying to figure out where those things are coming from, the grants to get better, you know, more raw water, to figure out how to, how to do this well. And that's, and part of that also is, you know, communicating with our folks that, I never realized before coming here that too much rain can make it to where you can't make good water, because it's too turbid and it's too flipped over. So I'm like, it's, it's raining, how can we not have water? And then, in the summertime, well, there's no. there's no water because there's no water. Okay, well, that makes sense. So you got it, you know, I just, this has been the most eye opening thing for me to be a part of this and just think, how, what, you know, it's just, it's crazy to me. So I really, we really like it when it rains, you know, like a half an inch in a day, and then another half an inch at night, and then another half an inch the next day. It has not been doing that.
Is that what we use? Do you have an idea what we use in a day?
No, oh, no, I'm asking how much rain falls to keep to where we can get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't, I know overnight, they talk about usually if they will lose a foot and a half from the tower. So if they shut off at 4:30 and then they turn it back on in the middle of the night, there's not as much water used, so it's not too bad. But boy, once that morning starts and everyone is up and getting their Wheaties and, you know, taking the showers and doing all that, the water does go down quite a bit. So if we don't do the extra to account for that, so if you only make a foot and a half of water in the in the tank in a day, well, overnight, not running, people are going to draw that down. So we, that is a dance we 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 walk and those fellows have to do, which is where more of that overtime comes. Because if they have to run that plant later, and they've already worked their day, well, then they're monitoring the plant or having to come in to deal with things or whatever, it is, that is expensive. That is expensive. So it's it's a, it's a, it's a dance. It really is. And our Public Works people, I'm so thankful for them for doing that 24/7, 365. It's, it's, it's not an easy job. So but we're trying to help support them with better equipment, solving these problems, coming up with thoughtful ideas to support them in their endeavors, because it's not an easy job.
So one of the things that I mentioned in my name that didn't quite make it, I understand that maybe
We can add.
Was about owning our dredge. In the past, we had.
Oh, I didn't quite, yeah. You actually sent me, I think, another text about that. So I didn't understand that that was what you wanted to put in.
Yeah, no, it's just what we had talked about dredge, you know, who's going to dredge for us? Could there be an intergovernmental agreement with the port? The port's dredge is not looking good, and they are incredibly expensive. It would be, I would guess that you're looking at, you know, $100,000 just to do, I don't know how how bad it is compared to like the ocean. But when we used to do it at the at the port in 20 years ago, when they used the portable dredge, and they would contract it off, it would be something like a $400,000 contract to move something like 15,000 cubic yards. So that that was 20 years ago. So my, you know, my thinking is, is can we afford that? Or are we more likely to afford a grant to get a piece of equipment to buy a new, a new one, you know? And we, you know, there's lots of things, you know, keywords you can use, you know, vegetable oil instead hydraulic oil, you know?
Yeah, biofuels.
And and that gets you in the door on a whole other grant, you know, that you know, because you don't want to use dinosaur stuff in our drinking water, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, just being creative. And I know that we are being creative with our
So we have, let me just to drill down and clarify what you're saying. And I don't quite understand this, but the estimate we have for dredging our current reservoir, like, which, because we had to get an estimate to go out to get the grant money. And so we had to get that estimate from the engineer to the project cost, something I think like $225,000 to dredge it and also to have a backup water supply. So that's like, what we're looking at for the whole cost of having to take our water system offline, have a temporary secondary source, and dredge out the big reservoir. So that, hopefully, that's enough money, because that's what we put in for. And then, moving forward after that, the dredging should be happening like annually or every other year, and that would should be a much smaller scale thing. So are you referring to like
Just
the first job or the second job?
Just the whole thing, whatever. But yeah, definitely maintenance is that's why we're in the situation we are.
Yes.
Because the dredge broke. And we got so, and it was hydraulic oil.
Yeah.
That was hydraulic oil. And that's the whole reason this stopped was somebody, we blew hydraulic line, and it was horrible, and we shut the whole thing down. And then and then we forgot about dredging.
Right.
Everybody did. And then when they did apply, we forgot how many yards that we were supposed to take. Was it two yards or 200 yards or, you know?
I think we dropped to zero.
Okay, so I think what we should do is, I think that that's like, the dredge, when when the, when this comes up that we're going to put this out to bid, we can ask the engineer that. But I'm thinking, just based on what's going on, that we just want to make sure that not only do we have to be thinking about getting the thing dredged, having the secondary water source, getting the funding to get all that done, that's kind of about as far as I've been thinking it through. We also have to like finalize where we're going to put the stuff.
Spoils when you get that, you have to put that because that's a whole other DEQ.
So there's all these different pieces. But I haven't gotten as far as thinking about that. But that is the next thing that we have to have in line, which is to make sure that so when the next year comes forward, we're going to be ready to dredge. So that's a good thing.
And having that, and actually having that money allocated and budgeted to dredge the next time is part of this grant. Like, this is a one time grant to come and do this. And so part of that is, okay, and then you also need to, you also need to have money for dredging in the future that's not grant funded, that you
So I've been looking at them, they're not that expensive, the floating kind, you know, that's, it's kind of funny, because it's not a real big pond, you know, and then you put this dredge in there, it's like, whoa, you guys, you know, you kind of chuckle at it. But that's, they're not incredibly expensive, but
Okay. Well, whatever research you do, I would love to see that.
I will share.
Let me know. Yeah, just give me, yeah, that'd be awesome.
There's government surplus stuff that that I think that we should be looking at, you know, it would be great to think brand new, but I, you know.
We just have to maintain it, not just let it sit out in the weather and
You know, it's, it's tough, you know, it really is, has been, but there's things, there's just, there's things across trades that one tradesman may not know, and another tradesman absolutely knows. And and I'm giving you an example, hydraulic lines at the end, you know, on the boat, we wrap them with this grease tape stuff, and it will stay good for 1 million years. But I can't even get the port employees to wrap their crane hoses with it, because they just don't even see any sense in it. It just makes no sense to them, which is infuriating.
What kind of tape are you talking about?
It's grease tape, just tape that's greasy, you know, and it, it's infuriating, just knowing what I know and then being responsible for I'm responsible there and then not seeing them do it. And you can't say nothing to them. I can't say nothing to them, you know?
Except you just did in a public meeting, so.
Well, yeah, except that would be management.
Except for that.
You know, they're not watching.
No, I don't speak with them, anyway.
Okay. Well, so I'm going to like, I'm going to like, try to bring this back, because I'm actually hoping that we might not have to spend the full two hours of this meeting. Because we did try to do, we tried to do the pre-work to help put something together. And so really, what we want to do from you guys is just get your impressions. And if the things that you wrote, the way you wrote them, aren't in here to say either, well, wait a second, what about my thing? And or, and we can clarify where it ended up. And or, if you see this all as, as it's been put together, if you have any adjustments that are like, hmm, why is this not a priority? Or why is this higher than the other? That kind of thing. Because, as Melissa said, there is like, there is such a long list of things we need to do. But the goal is to come up with the priorities for the next year or two, so that Melissa has a clear marching orders from us. So
I wanted to bring up the dredging, and we had thought that we might do it this fall. Well, we're not going to get the raw water tank by this fall. So the only other possibility is getting it from Garrison Lake, right?
Yeah. So the possibility, the strategy that the engineer has recommended is to get in some kind of package water plant, which sounds like it's like a, like the back of a semi truck, that would take in the water from the lake and then pretreat it and then put it into our water treatment plant. And then it would go into our, so it's kind of a
I've seen those online.
Short term.
They have the desalination. I wondered, why don't we desalinate? It's expensive.
Expensive, that's why, because it's super expensive.
It's the power that's to generate, the power generate, the power consumption is what is really expensive. But I've seen those not so expensive, too.
Well, we're, I think it's
It's coming down because there's such a need.
Well, you know, as Melissa had said, well, gosh, if we're going to get this for a backup, maybe we should keep this more around. But
Why do we need a temporary, man? We need a backup.
We're going to learn through this process as to what that entails. And if you remember when we were working on the first brick grant, there was in our Water Master Plan, the whole idea of going and taking and using Garrison Lake as a secondary water source. But there's a lot of problems with it. I mean, it's so low, it could be subject to salt, it's got a lot of aquatic weeds, it probably has, well, it has, you know, the septic, but that can be cleaned out. But anyway, there's a lot of problems with it.
Is what I read.
Yeah. So we're learning, we're going to learn through this process. We already did the preliminary water tests, made it through and flying colors. I think there were some, some things that would be easily cleaned out. But now it's going to have to have a higher level of scrutiny. So as soon as we get the funding that we're waiting for, so we can kick that off, that's like, to me
That's more important than the raw water tank, really.
It is, that we can move forward.
In order to move forward.
Yeah. And ideally
We have to do all of it to get at the same time, though. That's the problem, is all of these things are this like braided situation. It's all in motion.
But initially, just to clarify what you're saying, Counselor Burns, the thought was if we had the raw water tank at this time, then it would have really helped us because we would have another backup water supply. But having the raw water tank is not only good for that, it's going to be good for anytime we have a break or anytime we have to do anything like that, it'll help us, you know, that was former Mayor Pat and John Isidore thought it would just be a great thing to give us more flexibility and redundancy in our system. So that's kind of, but that's on a slower schedule. So the, and you had written, you had initially had that as one of your top priorities and really like moving forward to it with it. And the schedule of that raw water tank is kind of dictated a little bit by the grant process. So we got the first phase of the grant for that, which is design. And it's going to happen this year. And then at the end of the year, once that is done, we can apply for the construction. And that's like a second phase. And we're like, right in the lane to get it if that funding is available. So
Could happen next
Yeah, could happen next year. But this year, we will do, get the design done. Then next year, we would move forward with construction.
That would help for future dredging.
Yeah, or anything.
Just helps for a backup, so that if we do have a time when when the water goes upside down and it's too turbid, and we can't draw from Hubbard Creek, then we could actually have half a million gallons for them to process right there. And then so you can fill that up when the water is available to go.
Is that a day's worth of water?
I think it's more than a day. I think it's more than that.
Half a million?
A million gallon.
I have it written down somewhere. I don't remember what, what
I don't remember.
I can't remember the numbers on that, but
But it's all, we're all progressing kind of in a weave, because funders also want to fund winners. And so if we can show that we're, show that we're doing well, and we're leveraging together and braiding a really smart plan with different grants and the monies that we have and being thoughtful about it, then we're more likely to have a, an awarded grant package. And so that's really what we're, we're trying to do.
Another piece is the fire, being prepared for a fire. And if our tank is low, and we have a big fire in the city.
Right.
And we use up all of the water in the tank, not only will the town be out, but we won't have enough water to
And we've talked, right, and we've talked about how could we use Garrison Lake water in that capacity? How could we make it available, you know, for that? So there are, I mean, we've been so much thinking about how do we, how do we go about this? And been working with engineers through our grants and And so that actually was one of the ones that priority on my list that didn't make it somehow was the thing about trying to figure out if we could get a stand pipe associated with that raw water tank.
What is that? What is a stand? What is that?
It's apparently, it's a way that the fire, it's another
Oh, so you can just look up and see.
A valve.
Oh, it's just a gauge.
Yeah. Or no, it's like a valve where you can come in addition to a fire hydrant.
That's might, might be what it was.
Just so that, like, if we, and and this is, this is stuff that we have to sort out, because maybe they, I think the problem is they don't want to use raw water, or they haven't wanted to use lake water, but
But if they don't have any water.
If they don't have any water, or if our, if our water is down, and we don't want our citizens to not have drinking water, and we need a backup. These are things we would like to
This fall, that fall where we went into curtailment, I actually saw the creek that was coming into the containment. And, I mean, there was just so little water. It was incredibly small. If we had a fire that fall
That was going into the
Reservoir.
Oh, yeah.
Reservoir, yeah. It's, it's, it's pretty spooky.
It's, climate scientists have made predictions that lots of governments are pretty confident in. And that includes less rain.
Less rain.
Yeah.
And so kind of exasperates what we're, I mean, if, you know, whatever.
We're trying to, we're trying to, we will be trying to store more water.
Because there will be more in the winter, because it's more severe, right? That's, that's
Yeah. So
There'll be more water in the winter, but less, I think, the storage is what
Yeah. So any other comments? How about, Deanna, do you have any other ones?
No.
Counselor Rask, do you have any observations from your
No, I think this is a really, really wonderfully laid out and a wonderful plan. And it's just great to be talking like this.
Yeah.
Be so organized.
And one of the things, yeah, are you still, I'm sorry, what were you, I didn't mean to
Oh, I just said, thank you.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you.
And then my dog growled. Yeah.
Counselor Webb, any other comments from you on this?
No, no, I appreciate the decision here. Looks like you guys are really doing a great job.
Well, so what I'm thinking, the way I foresee, or that we've discussed, oh, did you
Counselor Burns, did you have anything else?
I'm good.
That we will move forward with this. And, you know, Counselor Pogwiz couldn't make it tonight. He got a copy of this. This is the first time you're seeing it. You can take it home, think about it. And if you have any adjustments or things you want to do, be in touch with Melissa. And the Finance Committee, you know, one of the big things on here is that fiscal responsibility and revenue generation, some of you guys contributed ideas on that. We are working, we've had two meetings so far, we're working through each one of those ideas and kind of comparing it relative to others. And we're going to create recommendations and findings that we will bring back on that. So that's where that is.
Ms. Mayor, so I did with something that I forgot about. And that was on the generation, revenue generation side.
Yeah.
I'm glad Hank's here. Hank, can, when, when there's a fine, is it, is that designated by the state? Like, for a speeding ticket, that, and then we can't do anything more than that? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
I remember when we were trying to talk about that with the burn, learn to burn permit or whatever, and, or maybe it was the lighting ordinance, I forget. And Taylor was explaining, it's tied to like, the classic misdemeanor, and you can, yeah, it was all tied
My thinking was, is that we're, you know, you show up to court and the guy drops it, just, it goes from 100 bucks to 50 bucks, just pow, you know? And, and we can't instruct our judge to do things. But given the effectiveness of the road diet and, and the, given everything that we know, that was why I made, why I asked.
And we did, yeah, and I think, yeah, I don't know, do you understand, Hank, the difference between which ones are the ones that we can raise if we wanted to, like
Assume ordinance is your own.
If it's not state law, then
City ordinance is our own decision on how we post those fines. But any state fines or arrest fines that go into a judicial court or circuit court, that's 100% already set by the state.
And those are crimes.
Unitary, does a traffic violation
Infractions.
Unitary assessments come out of both.
I, I believe, I seem to remember that, like, the nuisance part of our ordinance, which is one of the, the ones that were, you know, the enforcement question we've had, it was tied to like, you know, a Class C misdemeanor. It was like tied to something that was already a state thing.
Our ordinance stuff is our own decision on how we do that. We do have in our ordinance files, there's a breakdown of what a maximum should be for violation, etc. It's kind of complicated the way it was written long before I came here.
Yeah.
But it's our decision on how we do that.
Yeah.
Having said that, though, usually the people that we're dealing with, with that type of infraction or ordinance violation, don't have a lot of money to throw around. And that's why it's a mess to begin with, right?
Yeah. And that's why a lot of times, I think the judges And that's why a lot of times I think the judges.
Exactly that.
Make the decision and/or even when we've, you know, we're talking about some of the violations that had to do with what nuisance property, whatever you want to call them, nuisance properties, you have to look at the, you end up having to look at the situation and think, well, it's just going to make it worse if you try to, you know, find this person if they don't have money, you know, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, but, well, you know, in fishing, there's different licenses and permits that you buy and they charge different rates if you live in state, if you're a resident, it costs you this much and if you're non-resident, it costs that much. And our constituents may not, I would say most of them live here. And so I was interested in that vacant house tax, it seems really crappy, but so is being broken, not being able to get review water.
So it's in, it's in the, uh, I think what we'll do on these different things is once our, once the finance, finance committee gets clear on what its recommendations are, then we will bring them back and have a workshop or work session and then we can discuss some more to a council meeting. We can decide whether we want to give it a couple of hours to discuss because I think it's, it's an interesting topic and for everyone, um, or we can bring it to the council meeting.
Yeah, I just, there was one more thing I meant to ask, but I'm good now, I think.
Okay. And then the other thing I was just thinking to mention and we can bring it, so I think what we'll do is you guys think about it, if you have more things to say, same to Melissa, share with Melissa, we will adopt this as our, whatever the final version is, as our priority list, probably at the next council meeting if we can get it together. And/or should we do, finish the finance, we, we should probably finish the finances first.
So we know where we're at and what we can spend on all of it.
Right. So we will, we'll keep working on the finance committee to get through that. We've got, um, and we'll get more input from staff on that, like, because some of the things require us to learn more information, you know, like Gary mentioned, the idea of the gas tax, well, how much gas do we sell? You know, like we need like some basic information to figure out, is this worth it or not? And I know some of that stuff has happened, discussed in the past and we figured those things out. So we're, we're working on that. So once we get that done, we will bring that, then we will probably adopt this. And so we're kind of working in parallel and then you will have clear direction, even though I think this process is helping us learn a lot and helping us all get clear on what's needed.
And I think listening to, if so, constituents that want to talk to you folks of like, you know, to see this or think about it and having this meeting, that if they come to you and say, well, you missed this whole thing or this whole like, you know, why didn't you talk about this issue, then those would be things too to bring, to bring forward and, you know, because, because this is supposed to be a goal-setting for all of us. And so, um, I'm excited, I'm glad.
Along those lines, Joseph, I don't think, because I know we were, you were working on this till the last minute, but it'd probably be good to, maybe with the agenda for, for this meeting, to put the draft plan up online and then if citizens want to look at it and be in touch with us, they can. Okay. So any other things? Oh, I know what I was going to say. One other thing, and we can talk about this moving forward, but, you know, people did talk about enforcement, we had a couple of council members really say enforcement of ordinances is something they'd like to see. And, you know, some of these things are hard to move forward on, we, we've had it on the list for a long time and we've kind of like never gotten around to that. And that is one of them. And I'm thinking that maybe after we work through the finance committee stuff, we can maybe pull together a committee of council members that want to work on the ordinance enforcement. Because I think, uh, there's things that we need to do, a little more research on and learn on, we, we might want to figure out, well, what are the ordinance because we really want to prioritize enforcing, you know, what are the complaints that we're hearing mostly about? What's the education we need to do to the community? What, you know, like to have some more thoughtful, what do other communities do for enforcement? What are the reasons we haven't been, it's hard to enforce? You know, like have, really get down and gritty on some of those conversations and then that committee can help us. Because one of the things I'm learning about, well, I mean, we probably all have been through this, is you can say you want to do something, but if you don't break it into the small pieces and figure out why you're not doing it, it, it won't get done. So I'm hoping that this process, you know, the first step is put thing on the list, but then, um, you know, we will continue to move forward to figure out how do we actually get some things done.
And maybe even have a, a meeting at some point later in the year and evaluate how far we've gone and.
Yeah.
Ways that we could maybe help to.
Yeah.
Do things wrong.
Exactly. And, you know, I meant to bring that, I, I know I shared with council members, you know, that we, the progress we made at the end of the last, you know, what, what did we do over the past couple of years? And I think that's also something that's really helpful, that the priority setting helps us do. It holds, we can hold ourselves accountable and our staff accountable and the, helps the public to hold us accountable too of, here's the things you set out to do and you only did one of them or hopefully we'll do more than that. But anyway, so. Any other thoughts anybody has before we conclude?
I have one question, if I could.
Please.
So is it, is it the plan that, um, these goals will be set out on our agenda each month? Or do we reexamine them quarterly or what's, what's the plan for keeping tabs on them?
Want me to answer that?
Please do, I don't have.
So I would think, I would think that obviously if something comes up, you know, if we can click some of the things off, very much like frog and toad, like cross off, make a list off the top of the list, I love that, I'm a list gal, um, to be able to share that to you, but also, yeah, probably quarterly or as we move through them. I don't think necessarily, because we've not had anything like this up until now, to then try to build every agenda with what it's tied to and which goal, and I think that, I think that's just, that, that'd be overkill. But I think, I think having these maybe posted in this room and to be able to say, where are we at? How are we doing? And just have periodic check-ins or even, you know, Mayor Ann did the state of the city, maybe, you know, halfway through, uh, we talk about, have a town hall about where are we at? How are we doing on this? I think it's just to, to improve the communication.
Right, absolutely. And could we each have a copy of it in the front of our notebook?
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.